Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of council Monday, June 27th, 7:00 PM to order. We are missing Councilor Jason Nallt this evening. He has another engagement, so will not be attending this evening. Looking for approval of our agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Public participation time. Any folks in the audience that would like to come and address council? This is your time and opportunity. Microphone is just going to be checked to make sure it's on. Name and address for benefit of the recordings.
Okay. Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here because I have been highly affected by the dust and rock crushing and as have some of my neighbors. And I just wanted to, I guess, make sure that you understand how much this has affected our quality of life in the area. And we live in Pondview. I know that our neighbors on Ponside Terrace have had a far worse time with this than we have, and I feel terrible for them. But it's been difficult for us, too. We, I can't use my backyard. We were away on vacation for two weeks and we came back to solid mud from the dust and then it had rained. And it took three washes to clean our patio furniture. So this is the kind of stuff we've been dealing with month after month after month for almost two years. Well, a year and a half, I guess. And so to us, it's really important to know that we've been heard and that these bylaws are going forward. And I had heard that there was going to be a delegation of business people here today to dispute this passing of the bylaw, the third reading. And I just wanted to say, I hope that, you know, you hear your taxpayer residents. I know that these business people are probably taxpayers as well, but we'd like to have our voice heard. Thank you.
And just before you run away, your name and address for the benefit of...
Okay. Name is Linda Kirsteen. That's K-I-R-S-T-E-I-N. And my address is number 138, 3640 Propeller Place. Do you need a postal code? No? Okay.
Thanks.
My name is Yuni. I'm neighbor with Linda from Ponsview. I'd like to know if there are any guidelines for dust control bylaw? And because we having so much dust, I think this is more than guideline, I think. I don't know whether you have it or not, so I'd like to know this guideline, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Robert Hutton. 3613 Ponside Terrace. Again, I just want to address the wall. Unfortunately, I was working when the last meeting was held about the wall that's on Ponside and Latoria. My concern now is what's going to happen next with it? Are they going to put in trees or some type of beautification to this wall? Our house faces the wall, so that's all we see is this rock wall. So is there going to be any beautification? My other concern is, I was talking to one of the gentlemen, this rock wall has become a home for rats because there's all these little crevices. He's caught three of them so far, and I wish that he had come in tonight. Are they going to cement this wall? Or is that it? Is this going to be crevices and rocks everywhere? Because this needs to be addressed. There's rats and whatever else. And the other concern is, is people on that side, children are going to climb this rock wall. If it's cemented in, they won't be as inclined. So is there going to be any further sealing of this wall? And that, you know, the rats and the kids climbing it. Is there going, you know, we're concerned about this. And obviously, the dust, like everybody else mentions. I sent you a letter about a year ago, Mayor. Did you receive it? From Robert Hutton?
I'd have to go back.
And I addressed all the concerns about the blasting and the rock.
Yeah, and that would have been forwarded into staff for the work that was being done?
Okay. I didn't, I didn't hear back, so I didn't know if it actually made it to your desk. That's all.
Okay. And as far as your questions go, you are welcome to contact staff during business hours and have a more detailed conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Your worship, members of council. My name's Hugh Gordon. I live at 425 Pelican Drive. I wanted just to speak in support of your retaining wall bylaw. I would like to note that the step retaining walls is a very, us acceptable, or to myself and my wife, a very acceptable way of dealing with that and dealing with contouring on the land. We lived in Dean Park at one time. We had a seven-level house, three and a half stories high. There were no retaining walls. There were no retaining walls in Dean Park. It is a very steep construction. If you want to build, have a level lot, you shouldn't buy a lot the shape like this and try to build a huge retaining wall on the boundary and turn it into a level lot. And that's effectively what is going to, there is an effort to try to do that. And it really does destroy the character of a neighborhood when you do that. So I think that, I'm hoping that with the retaining wall bylaw and with the enforcement of it in a reasonable way, the provision of building permits to, in circumstances where it is warranted, I don't think, I think you can avoid a lot of problems in developments like ours and other developments that are built on slopes. I would like to point out, I was here two weeks ago and it was a very busy meeting and I didn't feel I should take any time to speak. But the developers all came and they were all against the retaining wall bylaws. And the residents who lived in houses were all for a retaining law bylaw. And I would like to point out that the interests of the developers are a very different interest than the interest of the resident. The interest of the developer, he's trying to develop a big piece of land and he's trying to build in roads. And when Callwood develops that, they put in retaining walls. And I can't, you can't forget seeing the retaining wall in View Royal as you come up that beautiful rock wall they have. Large retaining wall would have to have a building permit under the new rules. That's a very different situation than somebody who has a lot, has bought a lot, and now is going to build a house on the lot. And you have to ask the question, will a house, will he be restricted from building a house if he doesn't have a retaining wall? And generally, he won't and he doesn't have to be. And I also owned a house in Rockland. It happens to be the only post-World War II heritage house in Victoria. And it is built on a very steep lot. And there were no retaining walls and it was three stories high. So I don't think you need retaining walls to build houses on slope lots. And I don't think, and I think having, if you want to build a square box house, find a flat lot. You don't need to find a very steep lot and try to turn it into a flat lot. And so that was the point I want to make with respect to saying, I really encourage you with the retaining wall and I hope that the application of it is such as to make neighborhoods more easily livable than looking at, everybody's looking at their, up there in their backyard at another great big huge concrete structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? And for a final time, any last speakers? Seeing none, we'll move ahead. Mayor's message. There's lots going on. We had, what was it? Rock the Waterfront Tour de Shores on the weekend. I understand that it went very well and 300 people in attendance. Yeah. And so good set off for the upcoming eats and beats on July the 9th. And I think we're going to have a few more people than that down there, that, in that event, judging by the returns and information that we've had. So looking forward to it. Any other members of council with anything on their council stuff? Nothing? Alrighty. We'll move on then. Adoption of minutes for our regular meeting of June 13th and the special meeting of June the 20th?
Move adoption, your worship.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Pardon?
Yes. I'd like to speak to the minutes.
Sure.
I'd just like to note that there is a correction on page 17 to replace the word duct with dust for the first three readings.
On which set of minutes?
Page 17. Oh, I'm sorry. The June 13th, 2016.
Got that one?
Yep. And also on page 16, where I spoke to the bylaw, the word ration on the second line should be ratio. And there's a couple of things that I wanted added to that paragraph that were omitted, that I mentioned. And that was that I mentioned that it could cause financial hardships to the developers. And I also mentioned that it could cause increased planning department workload dealing with variances.
With that, looking for adoption of the minutes? Or second? Did we get it secondary on that? Yep. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Looking for receipt of two sets of minutes. Protective Services, May 18th. Parks, Rec and Culture on May 16th.
Move receipt.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Presentations. We have Mr. Troy De Souza with us in the audience. Troy?
Thank you, your worship, councillors. My name's Troy De Souza. I live in West Sanich. And it's a pleasure to speak to you today because I'm here to reiterate and pass on the message of congratulations that Callwood is a leader in British Columbia with respect to bylaw enforcement. I believe everybody here knows that about a week and a half ago, Phil Williams over here was awarded the Bylaw Officer of the Year in the province of B.C. by his association at LIBOA. That stands for Licensing Inspectors and Bylaw Enforcement Officers Association. It's a very competitive award. There are two awards actually that are given in this process. One is for career achievement and the other one is for Bylaw Officer of the Year. And so career achievement is usually given to someone who's served this community, their community, for many years and it's toward the end of their career that award usually comes. Bylaw Officer of the Year is the more active and engaged award. It's the award given to someone who's really made a difference in this community, in their community. And I can tell you, there's some incredible people, terrific qualifications all over the province. And it was really a pleasure just to see the association and the executive come to unanimous determination in awarding Phil that award. And I think what it also underscores is the really terrific team that the city has built up over many years. And I've had the privilege of working with your bylaw enforcement team for many years. I've seen the development. You've got a great group with Kevin and Rick and Phil and, you know, that Troika is a, not just because it's my name, but it just really works well with this community. And by council giving it the support that it needs over these years, the independence, the sort of sense that, you know, some leeway to allow them to do their job effectively. This is what it results in, where their own association and their peers come to the acknowledgement that Callwood is the leader. So, you know, it's a, it's a great honor. It's a great privilege. It's great to work with such distinguished people. And really, it's a commendation to the city and your worship for the work you do and the support you give to these teams. So without any, I just want to again thank Phil Williams for achieving this award this year. Thank you.
And not wanting to spoil Troy's address, we now say thank you, Phil, from all of council as well.
Yeah, you're very welcome. I'd just like to say that you're a great member of the city of York, but I can't do the work for the whole of the party because I couldn't do what I do, but wasn't able to do what I can. And of course, Mayor and Council backed me on that. I'm a little angry, I don't know why.
Thank you. Moving on to our next presentation, Ben Mycroft from, in regards to the bridge in Meadow Park. Ben?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Ben Mycroft, project director for GWL Realty Advisors at Royal Bay. I wonder if we could just put that presentation in perfect. So I'm here tonight mainly to discuss, I think, two bridges that are integral to the Meadow Park at Royal Bay. Also, I'll take the opportunity just to provide a brief update on construction of Meadow Park, which is going well. So I just wanted to, here's our current rendered site plan, providing a conceptual level of detail for Meadow Park. As you can see, the, where the blue water runs through is the constructed drainage course. And we've got the two bridges and the man-made island in the middle there. Here's a photo taken in March, which, you know, could be from the Curiosity Rover on Mars or at Royal Bay. Just kind of the barren moonscape that existed in March.
Trying to make, trying to make it bigger for your teeny eyes?
Press F.
It should be full screen.
So window, full screen.
Yeah. View. No, view. View right at the very bottom? Try there?
Okay.
No, no. Yeah.
Sorry about that. So a photo from March, looking south down Meadow Park towards Latoria Boulevard in the distance. And a photo from today, where it's completely transformed three months later. We've added, you know, thousands of cubic meters of soil. So it's exciting because it's the first part of Royal Bay that was not kind of a greenfield site. This is the first part of Royal Bay that's a reclaimed mine. And so this represents three acres of land that was absolutely barren before. And in a short period of time, we've, you know, sort of transformed the place. We have another three weeks or so of construction until we're substantially complete. There'll be lots of little details to sort out, not least of which is our bridges. And so currently, I'm here tonight. We are sort of at an impasse as far as the bridges that are proposed for Meadow Park. Previously, Royal Bay, prior to my involvement, had proposed wooden bridges. And I've just kind of given you a few dates here of dates that Royal Bay came to this council and the Parks Recreation and Culture Committee to present character images and plans that generally showed a wooden bridge concept. Following the April 3rd council meeting, there were some suggestions that came back to Royal Bay through staff, including changing the Gabian Wall to something that would probably be a lesser maintenance requirement, adding lighting to the bridges, as well as a comment that the timber bridges had a potentially higher maintenance cost and just to consider some alternatives. So at that point, Royal Bay, I should, I should say, probably got a little carried away. We took that advice and went ahead and came up with some wonderful aluminum bridges that our landscape architects designed. And with the intent being that these would be durable, long-lasting and low-maintenance. However, they were, to be fair to staff, inconsistent with what had been previously shown to council. So I think we just maybe got a little ahead of ourselves. And so the comment being, you know, the aluminum bridges that we had proposed were quite stark and all aluminum with a wooden deck. So after much back and forth with the engineering department, this is, you know, kind of this is from a Google search, to be honest with you. It's typed in aluminum bridges and wood. So what we've done is we've come up with a concept, which would be to basically adorn the bridges with what we think is quite an attractive wood railing. And although the design of that particular aluminum bridge is different than ours, we've taken this wood railing concept with the wooden deck and had an artist rendering, apply it to what our aluminum bridges would more or less look like at Meadow Park. So this is a photograph of the park. And we've had a graphic artist sort of render in. You can't look at the trees as being representative of reality or of what will be there, but it just gives you an idea of the finished feel of the park and what the bridge could look like. So this does not, this does not look like the heavy timber and steel bridges that had been proposed previously. However, we do believe that this is a very good design. It's a, it's not a cheap design. You know, we believe it's very good value for the city of Callwood. It will be very long-lasting, very durable with what we believe would be a very low maintenance cost. And taking comments from staff, we've tried to incorporate as much wood element into the bridge as possible so that it doesn't feel too stark. Some of the design rationale for having the metal look is kind of a homage to the history of Royal Bay as an industrial site. Our landscape architects thought that that was an appropriate design theme. Further to that, we're sort of fairly far down the road with our construction contractor. Not that that's specifically this council's problem. But I just thought I'd pass that along. So this is kind of the engineering details for the bridge and a railing there. So rationale, as I just went through, you know, very low maintenance cost, very durable. The exposed metal look is intended to lend to the history of Royal Bay. We've added as much wood as we reasonably could to go back towards the concept that we had previously proposed. This is not a cheap bridge. Like, these are very nice bridges. I think that all residents of Callwood and Royal Bay will enjoy. And I don't think that anyone would sort of look at it and think, gee, why did they do an aluminum bridge? However, you know, our previous direction to council was different. So I'm here tonight just asking, please, if council would consider adopting a resolution or otherwise advising staff that this aluminum and wood bridge concept, it would be generally acceptable subject to approval of the details with the engineering department. Thank you. Any questions?
I have to say, any questions from council to Ben?
Ben, could you tell me, that bridge in comparison to the old bridge, what's the lifespan?
Well, as far as the lifespan goes, I couldn't say exactly. But we do believe, in fact, we are quite confident that the aluminum bridge would have a longer lifespan. It will be virtually no maintenance, other than probably the wood elements as well as, you know, periodic safety inspections. But we would not expect a lot of ongoing maintenance. At some point, I don't know if it would be 40 years down the road or in that order. You know, perhaps the bridge would then need to be either replaced or modified or upgraded. But a wooden bridge, we believe, would probably have a higher cost to the city of Callwood as far as maintenance requirements and would require more annual maintenance, especially after the first few years have passed. Thank you.
Councilor Dave?
Thank you. Just two questions. The bridge is designed to incorporate some lighting elements?
It is. Yeah. So we had taken that comment on board. And this is a design-build bridge that we, our contractor hired a bridge design company to design. And that was one of the requirements, was a wooden deck and LED lighting integrated into the bridge so that there's, along the railing periodically, there is an LED light providing good pedestrian lighting, but not a lot of light pollution.
And on the wood decking of the bridge, would that be removable so that it could be treated and then put back in place? It would be much easier, I would imagine, than painting over top of the water course?
Yes. Yes, it is. So it's designed, the high maintenance aspects of the bridge are the wood elements, but they are designed in such a way that the decking could be lifted up. So the structure is aluminum. And then the decking is placed over top of that as, not a decorative surface, but for pedestrian use. But it could be lifted and restained or replaced.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, thanks, Ben?
Thank you very much.
Moving on to section six in our agenda, correspondence requiring council. 6.1, we have received a letter from Jim Hartshorn of the West Shore Developers Association regarding Callwood's dust control bylaw.
Move receipt.
All those, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Item number 7.1, Parks, Rec and Culture Committee report from city engineer regarding bridge in Meadow Park. Royal Bay report is before us. Staff?
So this is, this is an aesthetic question about the bridge. There's no structural question here. There's no engineering question in the sense, whatever bridge is built will be adequate to the task. There is a financial element has been referred to in terms of maintenance. And I would say that Ben was a little pessimistic about both sorts of bridges. I would be fairly confident the aluminum bridge will still be there 100 years from now. A wooden bridge can last decades. Depends what it's finished with. We know the bridge down Swamal Lagoon is still there after 80 years, but that was creosoted. And you can't do that anymore. And there's no question that a wooden bridge would come with a higher maintenance cost. I've included the previous report and the resultant resolution for background. Although perhaps the, the significant part of the previous report is the visuals. Council made a decision to accept the proposal for Meadow Park based on a lot of information. And the only thing that's changed is the visuals on the bridge. And the visuals shown, starting on page 14 of 24, when I look at my iPad, show mainly wood elements. In fact, almost entirely wood elements. The bridge in particular is a very warm wooden color. And the proposal is for an aluminum bridge, but with significant visual wood elements. And so council's decision is to decide if that aluminum, aluminum bridge will make a perfectly acceptable park, bridge in the park, or not, whether wood is still preferable. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilor Dave?
It's just a comment. So if someone had questions, they could go first.
I don't see any coming.
So, so my comment is that it's unfortunate that our staff have had some excellent ideas. The weathering steel, it sounds like it would have ticked all of the boxes. But it would appear that the developer was a little further down the road and unable to take advantage of that idea at this time. I have personally seen a number of wooden structures built in our parks and they certainly do have some long-term concerns with them. There's a number of them. I've certainly witnessed the issue around painting over a water course being a major issue. And I've certainly seen that the maintenance and inspection of bridges has come at a high cost for the city. So I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not totally unhappy in that I think that this is kind of a blend of both great longevity and, you know, the beauty that wood does provide. I'm pleased that the wood decking is removable so that it can be, you know, taken out of commission, fixed up, and then put back together. I don't know if that might just... I don't know if that might just mean new wood, or the same wood. I have some small concerns just about graffiti and vandalism. Wherever we have combustible surfaces, we, we have more concerns, whereas a completely, you know, had been made of weathered steel, I think we would have had much less likelihood of graffiti or vandalism occurring. But I feel that the bridge as described here tonight is relatively aesthetically pleasing, and certainly an improvement over some of the wooden structures that were put in place previously. So I think, I think we're winning, I think we're coming ahead. Unfortunately, it's not quite the best idea. There, there was maybe one idea better, but I can accept that perhaps we're just a little too far down that road.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Your Worship. I, you know, I think we need to recognize that the developer has actually taken all the suggestions that the cities had to heart, and made all the adjustments that were asked of them. And, you know, I think the, the bridge is one small element in what is turning out to be a very beautiful park, and I took the opportunity to sneak in last weekend, just stayed on the asphalt, and, and had a walk. And, you know, it's, it's very impressive, and, and I actually can't wait to, to walk the whole site. So I think the, you know, the wood certainly softens up the bridge, but again, it's only a small element, and, and, you know, I, I'm a big wood fan, too, and, and obviously I would have loved to seen a wood structure, but sensitive to, to the long-term maintenance aspects of it, and, and the effect on the taxpayers. So I, I'm supportive, I think this is a good compromise, especially at this late stage, and, you know, I appreciate the enthusiasm to get this moving and the jumping head a wee bit, so I certainly don't fault the developer for, for, for that at all. Thank you.
Anybody else at this time? We still need to put the recommendation on the floor two.
Great, thank you, Your Worship. When I first was notified about the changes in materials of the bridge, my biggest concern was depending on what material we would use, the material can get very hot in the summer, and if it's very hot, then people do not want to lean on it, or kids don't want to touch it, it's very hot, so it, it would cut the usage in half, people can't enjoy it to its full, to its full potential. And so as Counselor Day said, it's kind of a win-win with the blend, so having the wood there did address my initial concern. And again, lower maintenance cost is always a plus, especially when we know this one's going to be one of our most expensive ones in the community, so I'm very much supportive. And I'm willing to put the motion on the table, option one.
Any further comments?
Nope, that's everything.
I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said, although I am very, very supportive of, of what Royal Bay's doing. The only, I'm, I'm going to say this because it's probably my only opportunity to say this. Personally, and this is just me personally, I prefer sort of an arch bridge versus a straight flat bridge. I just think aesthetically, it looks a little more pleasing, it looks a little more like it's a playful area to be around versus a functional area to be around, and that's, that would be my only comment. I mean, I'm looking at, it was on page, oh gee, 66 of 200, and it has a picture of a golf course bridge, and that's, I, I, I think aesthetically, it might look a little nicer there, but I'm certainly not going to criticize what they're doing, I, I very much appreciate what they're doing. I just don't personally like straight lines.
Call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
You had such a great comeback.
I know you did.
I appreciate you keeping Rosha.
Again, under Parks and Rec and Culture, seven point one point two, Recommendation Update Mitigation of Mosquitoes at Callwood Creek Park.
Great, thank you, Your Worship. So the mosquitoes have been a very long, ongoing issue, with several complaints received, especially this year. That is because the mosquitoes are particularly abundant, and they're out earlier than usual due to the warmer season. So thanks to staff and Hat's efforts, it has been recommended that the best solution to mitigate the mosquitoes in the area is to install swallow and bat boxes. Hat would like to work with the city in a pilot project to insist, or to assist in the reduction of mosquitoes. And this would also include an information meeting with the neighbors to inform on the benefits of bat boxes, and also birdhouses. Ideally, this would also provide an opportunity for residents to build their own bat boxes or birdhouse if they so wish, and it's a great venue for them to discuss the issue of mosquitoes. There also is a financial implication. A staff member has volunteered to build swallow boxes on her own time, with the possibility of having residents build their own. The boxes are about $5 each done this way, and if the swallow boxes work well, which so far they seem that they have, I've seen them, and they seem pretty easy to make, and Google helps, there will also be an attempt to make the bat boxes at a lower cost. Otherwise, Hat has quoted the city $60 per bat box, which would be approximately 240, I think that's for about four, and then 200 for the swallow boxes, coming to a total of $440, and this would be taken from the invasive species budget. So I would so move that council endorse that staff with the assistance of Hat, due from one to six.
Any comments or questions from council? Counselor Logan?
Well, I, I live in the area, and I tell you, it is nasty, and so you can't go out into your backyard without being eaten alive this year, and it's probably one of the worst years, I think, in that area for mosquitoes. So I, I think if this small measure will help, then you'll have a very happy neighborhood, and it'd be a good demonstration project.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Has anyone spoken to Royal Bay High School about the possibility of them building the boxes in their shop class, or their woodworking class? Because I, I mean, I would prefer to shift the money there and let students have an opportunity to do something versus just buying something retail. So that would be my only comment.
Counselor Day?
I think that, I'm not quite sure how the funding will work, but I do know that a staff member has volunteered to, to build some prototypes, and they were looking at, at being, if those are successful, which so far they do appear to be successful, that that brought the cost down to about $5 per unit with, with free labor. The staff member was doing it on their own time, so as to just show us how it could be done. And so the estimate from staff was about $5 worth of materials to create each one. So I thought that sounded like a, a great opportunity, and, you know, if we could get a school interested in building some of those, that'd even better. I just wanted to suggest that when we are meeting with the community around Callwood Creek Park, that we also talk about stream health. I noticed, I haven't been through there for a little while, but in years past, I've seen a lot of yard trimmings deposited along the banks of the creek, which depletes the oxygen in the water, and makes it very difficult for the critters to live there, who would eat the mosquito larvae, which we'd like them to do. So I just think there's a, an opportunity, when we have everyone on the same page, to talk about the best way to support that ecosystem, to breed the right kind of animals for us.
And just going to your comment with the school, the problem, I think, is that school's out for summer? And so, you know, a great conversation to be had in the fall on projects that might arise like that, for sure. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Through staff, or through the mayor, excuse me, to staff or to somebody. So if I'm, if I'm looking at the third paragraph of this report, basically about Hat quoting the city $60 bat box and blah, 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 and then I look at the recommendation, recommendation number three and number four, excuse me, number three and then number two, and then number three again, install three to four rocket-style bat boxes, install 15 to 20 swallow boxes, I don't have an impression of where we're purchasing these from. I mean, I've heard stories that there's a staff member who's building them for five, and then I have in my report that they're $60 a bat box, and I don't know what I'm approving, or which I'm approving in this motion. So I'm just looking for some clarification there.
Your worship, you're, you're approving up to $440 for bat boxes and swallow boxes, but if staff can proceed with building them as proposed, then you won't be spending the 440, it'll be just for materials.
Sorry, can I just follow up to that, then, through you to our C E O, then, can you explain the $1,000 per day, two days to install? Where's that occurring, where's that coming from? So is it, is it actually more like 2,400?
Sorry, Your Worship, I'm not aware, I'm just looking over at our engineer to see if he, if he knows, but I, I'm sorry, I don't know.
The $1,000 per day is a price given by Hat, and we're certain that staff can do it much cheaper than that.
Thank you. Can I just do one more follow-up? Just as, as a quick follow-up, then, I would like to clean up the motion so that it's clear, and that, so that I have a very clear idea of, of how much money we're spending, where we're spending it, and who's doing it, versus leaving several options open with a...
So your amendment?
So my amendment, my amendment is let the $5 box person do it, whoever that person is. That's my amendment. We're a maximum 20 bucks, and I'll give them a Big Mac, I don't know. Like, how many boxes are they building? I don't know. 10, 15? 20 times 5 is 100 bucks. So then I'll move 100 bucks, unless we need to come back to, or if it's going to be done by Hat, then I would like us saying that in the motion, that we're having Hat do it, at what, what amount? Because I would like to be very clear on what amount, if it's $400, $1,400, or $2,400. And if we're going to take that 2,000 and let staff do it instead. So I, I just, for me, I just want to be very clear what I'm voting for.
I accept that we, we didn't build the cost into the resolution, and that really would have helped, and yes, thank you for catching that. And if you would want to set the cost for materials at a maximum of, why don't we say $300, give us a bit of leeway, and, and staff to do the installation, that, that would, that would limit the amount we can spend, and as, as you wish to, and give us enough leeway in case the next piece of wood we buy is a little bit more than the first one.
Then I will make that amendment.
So, so in essence, what I'm hearing is that we give consideration that staff are to build and install these material costs, not to exceed $300? Is that where we're at? Counselor Day?
I think staff are supplying the wood, I think, or, or using the funding...
The wood is being bought.
Yes, the wood is being purchased, and I would imagine staff are purchasing the wood because it's coming from the city budget for invasive species, and that staff would install the boxes, but I think the plan is to get the community involved in building them, which I think is beneficial all around. And if we're successful in keeping the cost, sorry, very low in building each box, then we might be able to install more boxes, because we may have members of the community who, oh, I want a bat box in my backyard, and then, you know, six more neighbors down the street would also like to have bat boxes in their backyard, and that's going to give you a much greater possibility of actually addressing the problem at hand, which is an overabundance of the mosquitoes.
So are we all clear as mud yet?
Oh, yeah.
You're good? So I need an...
I made the motion to amend, but I didn't think there was a second or anybody...
No, that's what I'm looking for, then.
So I will second the motion to amend, and the amendment, if I'm understanding it correctly, is that the amount from the invasive species budget is $300, and we are talking about staff installing the boxes in the park, or neighborhood.
Clear? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Then on the main motion, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving into Planning and Land Use Committee, report seven point two point one in regards to extension development variance permit, application number D V P 140053346, resolution way. Staff? Good. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had a request by a, a property owner to extend the variance permit that was issued almost two years ago. Due to some financial constraints, they weren't able to, to start the works developing their property. They've now asked to extend the, the variance permit to give them time to start construction on their home. Thank you.
Move the recommendation, Your Worship.
Second, discussion comments? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Are they actually going to do the work, or are we just extending this?
Without having spoken with the applicant directly, I'm not sure at this point.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just would comment on this one, that it's an expensive and nerve-wracking process to ask for a development variance permit, and I think since we deemed it was appropriate, when they thought they were going to build, this perhaps would give them the sense of security to know that we're still in favor of the same building that they had planned to build, and for that reason, I'm willing to extend their D V P to, and for the two years, I even questioned, well, did they need two years? They should be able to build a, a house in one year. But then there are costs to coming back to council, to writing a report, taking up staff time, so I think it maybe is simpler to just give them the two years, and, and hope that they are able to find their way through whatever difficulty they had.
Any further comments? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Just, just as a clarification on the summary in the first line, or excuse me, second line, or third line, the basis of the request is that the personal financial situation of the applicant is precluding them for proceeding with the construction of the new dwelling. That would suggest to me that they are not planning on, on developing anytime soon, or am I misreading that? Or is that not the intention of the report?
Well, the, the intention of the report was to, I guess, convey the request to, to extend the variance permit, I believe also maybe to allow them time to, I guess, hopefully, hope for changes in the situation, so that they actually would be able to, to build.
Okay. Can I just comment? I'm not going to be supporting this, and the reason I'm not, and I understand Counselor Day's rationale, and it makes a lot of sense to me, but I also feel very strongly that things shouldn't just sit out there forever and never conclude, and I'm just feeling like if we continue to just allow people to continually just postpone another two years, and another two years, and another two years, at some point, it needs to come to an end, and I think giving a person a two-year stand, and then for them to come back to council and say, I wasn't able to complete it within two years, but here's our expectation, I, I see no expectation right now that they're planning on it, they're just wanting to extend this for another two years, so I'm not planning on supporting that at this point.
Any other members of council? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving on, item seven point two point two, Planner on behalf of the Staff Selection Committee, selection of consultant to assist in the review and update of the official community plan and land use bylaw.
Your Worship, I'll be addressing council on this.
Thank you.
We've had quite a few discussions, from strategic plan through to... We've had quite a few discussions from a strategic plan through to budget about carrying out an O C P this year. It's by far the single most important policy council will ever adopt. And it's certainly the most important policy that any member of the community should pay attention to and put forward their best efforts to participate in when they can. Because it's really the forward shaping document for the community. We budgeted a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to do an O C P and land use bylaw review at the budget. I think it was ambitious to go at a hundred and forty-five thousand, but that was the number we chose to go with. And we've since advertised for consultants to carry out this process for us. All three proposals came in from very good applicants. All of them were over budget. We proceeded with doing a selection process with four staff members from engineering, planning, and myself. And including interviews. And have selected from the staff committee Dialogue to carry out this process. Dialogue had considerable depth in their team. And it was very varied in its talent. There was architects, planners, engineers, ecologists, sustainable specialists. And we're, I'd say, I'm going to understate that we were impressed with the Dialogue presentation when they came to us for their interview. They had a very good understanding of public process and the need for extensive engagement. They seemed to grasp the difficulties in doing O C Ps in the twenty-ten, twenty-sixteen era as opposed to the era pre-global meltdown in the financial markets. Because it is very different between pre-two thousand and eight and post-two thousand and eight in the way O C Ps are written today. And we felt that this is the, this consulting group would be best suited to take us forward and produce a very effective O C P, but more so a very effective community engagement process that will essentially give us a bulletproof process that everybody will embrace at the end of the project. So staff are recommending that we proceed with Dialogue despite the fact that it's over budget. And as we, if council approves that, as we work through the business or the project plan with the consultants, we'll be able to fine tune those budget numbers a bit more. And we'll either report to council in the fall on what the budget amendment will be. And we can either do that in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. The bulk of the work is going to happen in twenty seventeen. We'll be doing primarily engagement during the twenty sixteen timeframe and a little bit of historical background work into our existing policies. So really, the bulk of the work will happen in twenty seventeen. And we feel that we can address those budget shortfalls in the twenty seventeen budget.
I'll move the recommendation, your worship.
Second discussion, questions? Counsel Martin?
Thank you. I won't be supporting the motion. We're twenty-two percent over budget. And I guess I would like maybe through our mayor to our C E O, if he could sort of explain to us, how did we miscalculate by so much, by forty thousand dollars on planning that amount? What are we getting for that extra forty-four thousand dollars that we didn't anticipate?
I don't think it's a matter of what are we getting extra. I think we were just overly optimistic that we could do a project of this magnitude for, quite frankly, such a low price. If I'd had my druthers, we would have come out of the, with a two-hundred thousand dollar budget. But I think there was some concern that council wouldn't approve an O C P process at two-hundred thousand dollars. But that's certainly what my experience would have been for a project of this magnitude and the work that we need to do to build the foundation that we've talked about in the past in terms of getting good, solid policy in place and getting a really good, solid understanding of where the community wants to go and where the community wants to take this, take, move us forward, sorry.
Counsel Logan and then Day?
Thank you, your worship. I think the last time we went through this exercise, the price wasn't that far off, if memory serves me right. And we were only doing the O C P review. So for me, this is really, represents a possibility of a return on investment. And these are two huge, huge pieces of, separate pieces of work that needed to be done for a long time. So I think perhaps we're overly optimistic. But I'm not sure that we have a choice because I think the municipality is losing out on so many fronts by delaying it. And I think we've delayed it for a real long time already. So I think it's one of those things that, yes, imperative for the taxpayer that we just get her done. And I think at the end of the day, we'll find that it's probably a bargain. And our return on investment will be, will pay dividends more than it will end up costing us. So I think we just need to bite the bullet and get on with it. Then it's done.
Counsel Day?
Thanks. Definitely of two minds on this issue. Not so much because it came in so much over budget, but maybe more really speaking to history and, you know, how much bang for the buck you really get from an O C P. Although that really depends on the buy-in from the community and the buy-in from this council. You know, if we have an O C P that we really believe in and we're willing to fight for, that we really believe that our public cares about, I think then it maybe is worth spending a huge amount of money on. You know, I can think of lots of things that this community needs that we would never get this kind of budget to do. But my question that I have is really, you know, it sounds like all the proponents listed here were fairly well thought of in the review process. So given that the difference between the lower bidder and the selected bidder is almost half of what the, you know, overage compared to what we thought it was going to cost, are they that much superior?
Your worship, I... I would have to say that I would rather repost than select somebody other than Dialogue. If that helps you in understanding how, how I think the four of us felt. We felt very strongly that Dialogue was the group to take this O C P process forward. I don't think any of us could say that with that level of confidence about the other two. Could they do them? Absolutely. And, but if Dialogue had not been in the mix, I'm not sure that we would have been prepared to select one of the two. Given, at the very least, given their presentation with us. And that's a big part of it because it's an opportunity for us to talk to them about the really important issues that we all had at the table. And we all had different perspectives and issues that we wanted addressed. And also their ability to present, not only to the public, but also to council. And so we were looking at that as well. And furthers to that, the references that came back from Dialogue were exemplary. I've got a professional acquaintance that works in Abbotsford that just raved about the service that they provided in the Abbotsford O C P. If I can just touch on a little bit more. An O C P can probably be written for about sixty thousand dollars. But it's not going to be owned by the community and probably won't be owned by you. So it won't be followed. And that's the problem. The other, the other hundred thousand or hundred and twenty thousand dollars that you spend is all investing in the public engagement. That's all you're investing in. The document means nothing without that public engagement. And so that's what you pay for and that's what you invest in is getting the buy-in from the community and the buy-in from council at the end of the day. Because if that doesn't happen, it will not be followed.
Anyone else?
Thank you. I'm very, very hesitant about us moving forward on this and I'll explain the reason why. Our C E O expressed that during budget, staff did not feel as though council would be receptive to a higher number. And now the number's in front of us and we're now expected to be receptive of a higher number. I'm just really concerned around our budgeting process that we stay fairly consistent with what we decided when we worked through all that budget. And if we need to come back in two thousand and seventeen and readdress this and say, okay, we're going to have council and have the committee, the whole decide that we want to spend two hundred thousand on it, then that's the way it should be. But if I've just passed the budget and I've approved up to a hundred and forty-five thousand and we outspend that by forty thousand dollars, that's a significant thing without having the public have a significant say. And are they comfortable with that or not? And I just want council to be aware of that. I mean, if we move forward, we move forward. But it's a really red flag for me from a financial standpoint that we just make a decision to increase a budget by this amount without any major public input.
Any further conversation? This is a two-year project. And to delay this is either, you know, reposting it or it's having another conversation at budget time next January, February. And I'm not sure that we can delay. We have had longstanding gaps in our processes that this hopefully, when we go through, will start bringing all those parts and pieces together. So it is a significant amount of money. But it's kind of a crapshoot when you're guessing these consulting projects anyways. And we, you know, do our best at the time with the information we have at hand to try and get real numbers around them. But I've been sitting at other tables long enough to realize that sometimes it works for you and lots of times it doesn't. So I, I think that, you know, in the moving, you know, getting things together, I think Counsel Logan put it best, that the dividends at the end of the day will pay us back long-term, getting this information in a real way sooner than later. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Item seven point two point three. Deputy Director Planning, propose street name for Phase One D of Royal Bay Development? Evo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Royal Bay is moving on to the next two phases that are being serviced as we speak. The previously reported went to council with the, with four street names, including Ryder-Hestal Way. This is now a follow-up report for the next two phases, C and D. They have not been registered yet. However, we can bring a bylaw for council's consideration for the first three readings and hold off until, with potential adoption, until the roads that are part of Phase C and D are dedicated. And to keep with the theme that was chosen by the developer, the proposed street name for this is Bonaparte Street. And would be the next street after the Castel Street as shown in the plan attached to the report. Thank you.
Counsel Dave?
Thanks. Just a question on the map. It shows Bonaparte Street and on the other side of Ryder-Hestal Way, Pippet Place. And they appear to be the same road. And I just wonder if they... And I realize Pippet Place hasn't been put forward yet. But I, it's one of my little pet peeves about Victoria where the roads have five different names in five blocks along. So I would just ask, are we planning to name the street on the other side of Ryder-Hestal Way the same name or a different name or is there a reason?
As all street name proposals would have to go to council, there would be an opportunity to discuss this matter either at the time the bylaws brought forward. Or council can also direct staff to have that discussion with the developer before that occurs to indicate the preference for continuing the street name.
Okay, thank you. With that explanation, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Any further comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Finance and Administration, item seven point three point one. Report Engineering Admin Supervisor regarding request of waiver of noise by law. Twelfth Annual Web Place Block Party.
Move the recommendation.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Seven point three point two. Corporate Communications Manager, draft twenty fifteen annual report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have before you the twenty fifteen draft annual report for the City of Colwood. It's been prepared in accordance with the community charter. This report is a collaborative effort by all departments. And it's, as much as it's a chore, it's a really nice opportunity for all the directors to think about what they've achieved over the year and sort of celebrate and focus really on what they're looking at for the next year. It's kind of a nice exercise in the end usually. So the document does provide an overview of Colwood and tries to include rich images and pull out text that draws people into the full content of the document. It's one of the only big documents, overview documents we have that gets presented to the public. So we try to do a nice job on it so that we present well. The community charter states that council has to approve this document before June thirtieth of each year. And it has to be available to the public for two weeks prior to that. So it has been available online and at the front desk. About five people, to my knowledge, have requested a copy at the front. There have been no comments submitted to me for revision. And so I offer it to you for approval.
Counsel?
So moved?
Counsel Martin?
I just want to say this is spectacular. It's an awesome report. I congratulate you on it. Well, and all staff. I think it's just a, it speaks so well to us. And I'm really pleased with it from a visual standpoint. I think you did a beautiful job on it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're here. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item seven point three point three. Again, Eats and Beats Beach Event Update?
Thank you. So I just wanted to give an update. This event is fast approaching and lots of work is underway to coordinate, sure, to coordinate all the partners and the logistics, including food vendors, the stage and bands, washroom facilities, seating, different activities, transportation plans, and sponsors, and promotions. So lots of things are going on. The purpose of it is really just to get people together, to enjoy our beautiful waterfront and to show off a little bit, to demonstrate to food vendors that Colwood would be a great place to set up their business, for people from around the region to take a look at Colwood and think, wow, this place is actually really nice. So it's just a celebration of Colwood. We've got twelve food vendors booked, along with Royal Bay Bakery is going to be bringing some treats down. We've got twelve food vendors booked, along with Royal Bay Bakery's going to be bringing some treats down, and Skookum Cafe, which is the Pacific Center Family Services, is also going to be providing some, some things for sale as a fundraiser and also to raise awareness about what they do. Four prominent local bands will be playing at the event. And then one of the most significant activities we're gonna have at the event is what we're calling a graffiti vision board, and it's really the first introduction into the O C P review. And it's intended just to make people aware this is happening and invite them in to the process. It's kind of in a fun way since this event lends itself to something fun. So Coast Collective volunteers will be manning the station where this graffiti board is set up, and people will be invited to write or sketch or draw on their, what they think about Colwood, what they'd love to see more of in Colwood, what they love about Colwood. And it's just gonna introduce to everyone the idea that we're doing this, and they're a big part of it, and that it's going to be one of the big steps in creating a shared understanding about who we are and who we want to be. So it's an important piece. Other activities include free kayak tours provided by Ocean River Sports, and these are eco kayak tours. So the, part of the point of it is to raise awareness about the sensitive ecosystem that we enjoy in the lagoon area. If the weather's amenable, he'll be taking people out to the lighthouse as well. If it's too wavy for that, that, that part won't happen. We've got face painting, balloon animals, all kinds of kids' activities. One of our main sponsors is actually Royal Bay. They are sponsoring the stage and some kids' activities at the event, too. Royal Roads has provided some funding, and then some of our other partners, of course, Ocean River Sports, who's providing kayaks and everything for free. Coast Environmental is giving us a break on the porta-potties. There's all kinds of, lots of, you know, goodwill, goodwill happening around this event because our budget is really quite small for such a large-scale event. So I'll just, it's probably hard to see. That's just a site plan I thought I would sort of share that shows the stage on the road near, nearest the bottom there. And then those green umbrellas are where we'll have picnic tables set up. The food vendors are along the beach side there. And then on the, oh, I forgot to mention the kite flyers from the Victoria Kite Fest. We've got a space designated for them. A driftwood art competition, which is just, people will be invited to register at the Coast Collective tent and then stake a space on the beach where they'll do their driftwood art piece, which will stay on the beach. They can't bring any tools or any fasteners or anything, but it's just a little play with beach stuff for a little temporary installation that will be judged then, and we'll take photos of it and sort of have some fun with that. It's a funny thing, okay. Turnarounds will be placed at each side of the event. So this happens at just about midway on the lagoon. The only marker we have for this is Garbage Can Twenty-One. It happens right around there. I'm thinking that maybe if, if some of, right? If some of these driftwood art sculptures are kind of cool and could be sort of fastened together somehow and made to be a landmark on the beach, that would be fantastic. I don't know whether we'll get anything that's, you know, good for that, but that would be a nice thing. The other thing is the Wanda Fika Seniors Activity Center has offered their bus to shuttle people from the park and ride down to the event. So they'll just come down Ocean Boulevard, turn around, drop people up, pick people up, take them back to the park and ride, just a little loop. But that was a really generous offer. They're also giving us their volunteer drivers for the day, and all they wanted for that was a free meal at the food vendor trucks, so I would certainly do that. As you know, there's a high level of interest in this event. The best gauge of attendance we have is the Facebook event page, which shows, I think, about fifteen hundred people clicking the "I'm Going" button and over five thousand saying that they're interested. So that's a lot when we think about the Oak Bay Tea Party, which is very well-attended and maybe just better known than through a Facebook event. But there's only about six or seven hundred people on that event that say they're going. So this is a kind of a, an interesting gauge for that. I think that's all. We've got Saint John's Ambulance on site for first aid. Bylaw officers will be there throughout the event, and that, I think, is most of it. So this is just for information, yeah.
Council Dave?
Thanks. I just wanted to ask about people with disabilities and whether there would be some accessible designated parking spots because transit is, the shuttle bus is a lovely idea. Not everyone can use it.
That's right. Thank you. And there were some emails about this today, so thanks for that. There will be some accessible parking spots adjacent to the event. So just beyond the site plan I have here on the Lagoon Bridge side, so the Fort Broad Hill side, was what I was thinking, but we could also do it, we could probably do some on each side, actually, designate spaces. It was also suggested that maybe an area of seating be designated for folks with mobility issues, and we could certainly do that as well. That would be easy to do. It was a good suggestion. So, yeah, we will.
Anybody else? Council Martin?
Tour de Shore this weekend. The only thing that stood out to me that was sort of a semi-negative, and I'm afraid to even bring this up, but as the concert was going on, the tide was coming in, and so we ended up actually having to get up and move our chairs further in to get away from the tide. But as we moved in, we got stuck in driftwood, right? Because there's driftwood everywhere, and there's no possible way that you can actually set up a chair or anything else. As, is there any way that, in our black screen, that we can just clear out some of the driftwood where the actual stage is going to be just so that people aren't running into that situation of, of basically where you have the little dotted lines? Because people are gonna want to be sitting on the beach, and one of my biggest fears is that if we have a big turnout, it's gonna push people onto the sand, and they're not gonna, you can't really, other than sitting on the driftwood itself, you can't really do anything, and you can't get around the driftwood. And if the tide comes in, and I don't know if we've looked at tides, have we looked at tides? So will the tides be out that far all day?
They will be gradually coming in toward the end of the event, which I sort of saw as a, not a bad thing necessarily to say, okay, it's over and off you go. Frankly, right? We could certainly ask Public Works. They have done some nice tidying up. They've improved some of the access points in this area so that there's a, an easier route down to the beach. And they've been sort of lining up some of the logs, sort of English Bay style like they do there. There's still a significant amount of driftwood. They are perfectly willing to move the driftwood. It's a sort of a bigger conversation about how much intrusion we want to introduce to the beach.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not suggesting a lot of work. It's just, that was the one feedback that I got from the concert was that as we got pushed in, we got pushed into the driftwood.
I guess the other thing about this event is that on the weekend, the stage was pretty much right up to the driftwood logs. And here, we're gonna have quite a bit more street space, quite a bit more sort of promenade kind of action going on with the food trucks and everything. So there's a whole nother area.
Right.
So I think we might be okay.
Anyone else? No recommendation, just receive for information? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried? Verbal report from Director of Finance in regards to the Sophie report?
I think we missed it.
Is there one more? Oh, Beach Food Fridays. I was reading Beach again for update. Pardon me, sorry. Sandra, again, Beach Food Fridays.
Sorry, I'm on a roll there. Yes, I wanted to update you about Beach Food Fridays. So at your May twenty-fourth meeting, this idea for Beach Food Fridays was approved. And part of that was that an interim update be provided at this meeting, so that's what we're here for. We've hosted three successful Beach Food Fridays now, June tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth. It's just in the area, the second parking area past the washrooms, so further down the end this one happens. We've got nice new driftwood and rope stanchions you may have seen if you've gone by there that Public Works built for me from a little scribble I did on paper, which was amazing. They're not permanently installed, but they do have a plywood base, and then we just sort of put sand over it to make it look like it's installed, and it's really quite a nice thing that can be moved, but, but looks really better than orange pylons or something else that we might have done. And a lot of people have commented on, wow, that looks really nice. There's a few picnic tables in the area, and we put our nice bright green umbrellas there as well. And a lot of people have just said, wow, it's nice to see something, you know, bright and new and a seating space. So feedback's all been good. I included just some comments that a lot of people said, wow, this is what's been missing at the lagoon, some food, something to keep us here a little bit longer. A lot of people have said they would like to see it through the weekend or extended to Saturdays. And that includes both customers and people walking by, but also the vendors themselves would like to see, see how Saturdays, Saturdays would go because I think it would be even busier than Fridays. Negative feedback has been limited to requests like that, that they would like to see more of it. Why is it only Fridays has been the most common question. The picnic tables that are there are also getting a lot of use throughout the week and all, all through, all the time. So that's been nice, a reason for people to kind of gather there. Vendor feedback, they're, they're, they're enjoying it. They're getting, on the first occasion, it was kind of, the first time, there was not much awareness about it, but he had about eighty customers, he says. By the seventeenth, there were three vendors, and they all did about a hundred customers each, what they, they feel is really justified in that it's just gonna grow through the summer with, you know, kids off school and summer weather, so. So the vendors are happy, the people are happy. Staff time, the biggest impact, I think, has been on my time, and that was initially inviting the vendors and scheduling them and working through the permitting process, how we're gonna do that and stuff. That's leveled off now that we've got people booked through the summer. Public Works makes sure the area is clear of cars when they do their cleanup in the morning, and they do some extra cleanup. Actually, it's not extra. They do cleanup on, every morning anyways. So when they're cleaning the washrooms, they also double-check these garbage cans and do a cleanup of the area, but it's been really clean. They haven't had any extra tidying. They did put two extra garbage cans in the area just to make sure, and it's been not a problem. People really respect the area. Bylaw hasn't been impacted by parking. It's, it's been really quite successful. The one thing is that transportation, it's a really good traffic calming event because there is extra, there is extra activity there. People slow down to see what's going on. There are people walking along the, as they always do, along the shoulders, but, but maybe more so. What has been discussed, there's a footpath that happens between the washroom and this event site along the grassy area between the beach and the road. And it goes for certain ways, and then there are logs in the way. And so it's been suggested, can you just turn those logs and designate a path? Now, this is on the dunes, and so there's some sensitivity to doing that. The trade-offs are that people wander through that area anyways, and if we give them a designated spa, path, which we speak to about the stewards of that area and with engineering, maybe we minimize the intrusion to the area. So that's another thing I would like us to discuss a little bit. Finances, costs have been minimal. We did a few signs. The rope for the stanchions that we did has been, those have been really the only costs. We had talked about just three or four hundred and fifty dollars profit revenue from this event, but because we have about ten vendors participating now, it's up to about fifteen hundred. So we're making money on it a little bit. And also promoting our waterfront. People are loving it. The communications about it have been really good. People, you know, doing selfies with their poutine and stuff. It's kind of fun. It's been fun. So the options, I guess, around the recommendation tonight are either that we continue to offer Beach Food Fridays on Fridays through June, July, and August, I guess not June anymore, July and August, or we direct staff to expand the program and schedule food vendors to offer food for sale on Saturdays. And that would not be a problem to do. All of the vendors we've spoken to would just come, show up on Saturdays. It would be that easy. All of the permitting, the rules and regulations would stay the same. It would just be, they would be there on Saturdays. And then the second piece of it would be to explore options for designating a footpath on the beach side of the parking area between the washrooms and the event site. And of course, I would provide an update to council at your August twenty-ninth meeting to see how it all went. I offer you that.
I would be prepared to move the recommendation, staff recommendation.
Yeah, I know, I'm full of it every day. I've got a couple of questions. The first is, and I mentioned this to Pat, and I found out that there was no bylaw last Friday because I called about it. The issue that we're having is that, that people are parking on the lagoon side where it says no parking in front of the food trucks and then crossing the road to get the food trucks. And then it's really making it tight, like, which is great for calming, but it's not great if you actually want to get through. So I'm just wondering, are we going to do anything about that? Are we going to? Because I don't blame the people because there's no sign specifically right there that says no parking, even though it's the whole, but I think there's only three signs on the whole one side of the lagoon that says you're not supposed to park on that side. That's my first question. The second is, I've seen the ice cream truck park at the stop sign across from where the vendors are, and they just sit there and let people cross the road and buy ice cream on the end, and we don't seem to be doing anything about that. Again, that's part of the reason I had called bylaw to see if they would talk to that guy. Have we had any discussions with ice cream men and?
Not, not yet, but I want to, too, because it isn't really fair to our vendors who are paying a hundred and fifty dollars to be there for this guy to just cruise around. But he's been in our neighborhood for umpteen years. So I was gonna talk to the C A O about what our, our next steps would be about that, and I haven't done that yet. So I don't know if you have thoughts now, or we'll just talk offline.
Sorry, and the third quick question. At the top of Lagoon, Lagoon and Machosen, there are two street signs that are now circled by driftwood, which look beautiful. And I don't know if our staff did that or if some resident just stepped up and did that. Do we know who did that?
Public Works did that. They were up at a conference in Cranwell River and saw that as an example and thought they would try that and see how people received it. And so far, there've been really great comments about that. So that was an initiative of the Public Works team.
I, I would like to congratulate Public Works on that because I think it looks spectacular, and I would actually love to see that become more as part of the lagoon persona if we started doing that more and more and more. And so that sort of gave you the idea you were in the lagoon area. I think that would be cool, or waterfront area, whoever wants it.
I'll just speak to your parking, your parking comment. When I spoke to Engineering about that, what I heard from them is that that first section nearest the bathroom is actually parking. You may park in that area, and then it's beyond that. There's a parking sign, and it, it has an arrow that way. So unless we want to make a change to that area, we wouldn't be doing anything about that.
Sandra, just questioning, if we're gonna move, if we're looking at moving potentially to Friday and Saturday with vendors, I like the idea. Totally supportive. Everything that I've heard has been like plus, plus, plus down there, so it, it's all good. Just wondering or making sure that there's no conflict because when you have something available and then it's not there, that's when you get into trouble. So Rock the Shore usually brings in a number of vendors as part of their food air, end of things, making sure that we have vendors that are not double-booked or whatever in there, so.
And we do have some that are not part of Rock the Shores that have agreed to come, so we would be good there. There was one other idea that I had that I've, I haven't followed up on, but it would be about including some of our local, you know, brick-and-mortar restaurants in sort of a Taste of Colwood night. And I would like to explore something like that where we invite, you know, everyone from Goodview to Dad's Soup and Sangy's to Kasumi Sushi, everybody, to provide a small plate, maybe, for four or five dollars and have a taste of Colwood. You could go down and try, you know, four or five different of local Colwood businesses. So that's something I would like, that I've just had in my head that I would like to explore as well.
We have a recommendation before us, moved and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor, opposed, motion carries? Now we can move on to the Finance Sophie Report, please. Seven point three point five.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at this time of the year, the Finance Department is rather busy at the front end collecting property taxes, and at the back end, we're also finalizing preparation of the various statutory reports that are required. So the last formal presentation you've had on a major project was our financial statements, and you have in front of you this evening the Statement of Financial Information. And it is prescribed in terms of the format by the Ministry of Finance, and also the various items in it are also prescribed for you. So there's a management report that we've provided in Section Two, which basically gives you a bit of a background on why this is in front of you and talks about the various responsibilities of the, each party. The different schedules, I think, are self-explanatory, but this is your opportunity if you have questions on them. And it's a lot of information here, so I didn't really want to go through it all, but I'd be certainly happy to entertain if you have some questions.
Any questions to our Director of Finance?
I would move that the Statement of Financial Information for fiscal year ending 2015, December 31st, 2015 be approved as presented.
Second. And one last chance for questions. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, motion carried? Thank you very much. It's been a lot of work out of Finance and we greatly appreciate the straightforward way we're working on things.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven point three point six, again with 2015 Annual Development Cost Charges Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this is another statutory requirement. Report has been prepared by my deputy, Jen Hepting. It's pretty straightforward. Gives you the balances at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year for our, both our road DCCs and our sewer DCCs. And if you recall, for budget, we did look at both of these areas we plan will be increasing, the amounts of these DCCs we will be collecting. We also presented a bit of a plan and budget as to how those monies would be presented. This is just, just to give you an update on what's in those funds at the end of 2015.
Motion to receive?
Second.
Any questions? No? All those in favor, opposed, motion carries? Moving then into bylaws, Section Eight, bylaw number eight point one here, bylaw number 1621, final reading.
The final.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried? Bylaw number 1604, final reading, dust control bylaw number 1604, 2016.
The final.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried? And eight point three, bylaw number 1625, final reading, municipal ticket information bylaw number 1314, 2010, amendment number five.
The final.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried? Lastly on the agenda, first, second, and third readings to bylaw number 1627, City of Colwood Highway Naming bylaw number 1627, Royal Bay Phase One D.
The final.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carries?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried?
The third.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carries? No in-camera this evening, nothing to release, looking for adjournment?
Adjournment.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried? Thank